Just to let everybody know, we're still waiting for another member to arrive so that we can reach quorum, so it'll be a few more minutes.
(inaudible)
We need to move this. Can you move your? Can you move your name plate?
We have to draw a CD. Your name tag is on the front of your bag.
Thank you, Todd. We will now begin the May 18th, 2023 meeting of the Plan and Zoning Commission. Thank you for being patient. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Okay, I am now going to ask the commission for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th Plan and Zoning Commission.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Todd. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And abstain, pass? Abstain. Thank you. Now I will read through the consent items. On consent is a request from AHEPA, represented by Steve Beck, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan amendment for property located at 1111 East Army Post Road, for a type-two design alternative to waive the requirement to have a principal entrance on a primary frontage facade. Are there any persons in the audience tonight who would like this removed off of the consent agenda into public hearing? Seeing none, is there anyone in the commission who would like this item discussed tonight? Okay, seeing none, item one will remain on the consent agenda. We also have a request for item number two to move to the consent agenda. That item is a request from William C. Knapp, LLC, represented by Gerard Nugent, regarding two parcels located in the vicinity of 1803 County Line Road, for determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, and to amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use, and to rezone the property from EX mixed-use district to multiple districts. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item heard in the public hearing tonight? Yes? Okay, so we will leave item number two on the public hearing. So, item number one is the only one on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All right, moving on to item number two. Request from William Knapp, represented by Gerard Nugent, regarding two parcels in the vicinity -- oh, I'm sorry, number five. Continue. Also, number five, we have a request to continue. Item number five, a request from Des Moines Industrial Land, LLC, represented by Gabe Claypool, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan amendment, DSMI, transload facility for property located at 357 Southeast 15th Street, for type-two design alternatives A through D. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this to remain in public hearing for tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to continue item number five?
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, so back to item number two. In the public hearing, a request from William Knapp, represented by Gerard Nugent, for two parcels located in the vicinity of 1803 County Line Road, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, to amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use from business park within a future neighborhood node, to community mixed-use business park, public semi-public, and low-medium-density residential within a neighborhood node, and to rezone the property from EX mixed-use district to multiple districts, including MX3, MX1, P2, limited I1, and NX2 neighborhood mixed district, to allow a large-scale multi-use project. And we have Sri Oshie from staff to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sri Oshie Takrabharti, planning staff. The item before you is a rezoning request for a couple parcels in the vicinity of 1803 County Line Road. As Madam Chair mentioned, the proposal is to rezone the property from EX mixed-use district to multiple districts, which includes MX3, MX1, P2, limited I1, and NX2 neighborhood mixed district. The applicant for this project and this rezoning proposal is proposing a large-scale multi-use project, which is requiring the rezoning of the subject property. The development is proposed to cater to the needs and serve the residents of Harvest Academy, which is a rehabilitative workforce development program. The applicant has provided us a concept plan, which I will share with you here in a minute. Moving on. This is the vicinity map of the area. It's at the intersection of Floor Drive and County Line Road, south of the airport. As you can see, this area consists of largely undeveloped, as well as some light industrial uses in the vicinity. This is the subject property. Here's the two parcels shaded right here. I have a couple pictures here. It's undeveloped land. This is a view from Floor Drive. This is looking from County Line Road. With that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the rezoning concept, as well as the development concept. This is the rezoning proposal, and you can see in the layout here the various districts. Fronting Floor Drive is MX3 district, proposed along Floor Drive. Adjacent to this is P2 and the limited I1. Following that is the MX1 district, and then finally, this area to the east is NX2. So, the reason behind the various zoning districts is due to the fact that a variety of different uses are proposed, and those are laid out in a large-scale concept plan that was submitted with the application. I will point out that this is not finalized, this is just a concept plan. At the moment, it will change as the design and other details are worked out. So, this is a conceptual layout, and you can see kind of the different uses. The buildings that are proposed, fronting Floor Drive, are proposed to be zoned MX3, and they're going to be mixed-use. Adjacent to that, right here, if you can follow my cursor, this will be the limited I1 industrial area, which will include a moving company. To the north is a rec center. Following that, as you move further east, there's a few other transitionary uses proposed, some mixed-use, as well as some recreation, private recreation-type uses. To further east is the residential area. There are some townhomes proposed, right here, as well as potentially some multifamily as well. There are a few accesses proposed. There's one access off of Floor Drive. Currently, there's a couple accesses off of County Line Road. There's also an internal trail system, as well as maximizing on the green space with the detention area to the east. The streets, the internal street network, would be private street, but they're expected to be designed like a typical public street that follows our typical city design guidelines. So with that, this staff believes that the proposal that the applicant has come up with here fits with the, generally with the concept that they're trying to come up with, and the concept is a self-contained community serving a specific population and their needs, an area where they can live, they can work, and they have recreational opportunities as well. It's designed to function as a mixed-use new urbanist town center kind of a development. And so, in that context, it works well, and in the context of that, the proposed rezoning makes sense. And so, with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request to rezone into the multiple districts to serve the various uses that have been proposed by the applicant. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, which is required as part of the rezoning process, and here's a summary of the meeting, the attendance, and some of the topics that were discussed at the meetings. I don't think there were any major concerns that were brought up at the meeting, just mostly sharing of information to the attendees, but the applicant is here, and they can talk a little bit more about their discussions at the neighborhood meeting. Additionally, we did not receive any comment cards from the adjacent neighbors. This is the consent map. And with that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? I just have one quick question. What's the little, on the consent map, if you can go back one, what's the little knockout that says "Structures"? Does that have owned?
It's a separate property.
Okay, I just didn't see it listed on previous slides, like who it belongs to, that's all. Is it a private residence?
Yeah, it's a separate property owner. There's a house on there, I believe, and so.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Sri Oshie. Okay, the applicant now has.
One for Sri Oshie.
Oh, you have.
Yeah, I think she would be the one to ask.
Yes.
County Line Road, as you know, is a mixed gravel and asphalt road with no curbs or sidewalks. Is the city, has the city committed to paving County Line Road where this community will go, or is the applicant responsible for paving the road?
The city does not have a, I think the city intends to construct the road in the future. I don't think the exact prospection of the, or the design of the road hasn't been determined yet.
Okay, so just to recap, so the city would be responsible, it sounds like, to improve the road?
The city will be responsible for constructing. From what we know right now, there has not been any discussions of the applicant contributing towards the improvement of the road, if and when that happens.
Okay, and at this point, like you said, it's not in a CIP or anything like that for County Line Road to be improved in any sort of near-term?
Not that we know of, and there isn't a plan in place at the moment either, or design.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The applicant now has 10 minutes to present. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Matt Cohen with RDG Planning and Design, 301 Grand Avenue, representing the applicant, as well as the future user of the site, in Harvest Academy, representing a number of folks here who are guests as well, so we could answer any questions regarding the project. And I'll yield the 10 minutes to address any questions specifically from your review of the project to date, but we are very excited about the potential, and a lot of very good thought has gone into this from both the user and the property owner.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Carol.
Hi. I looked up, I was doing a little research on Harvest Academy, and it looks like, just by seeing the Q and A from your meeting, that this is a different model you're going with from what you currently do? Is that correct?
The model's similar, and I'll invite Taylor to come up and join me as well. So, this is Taylor Smith with the Harvest Academy.
The applicant for this project and this rezoning proposal is proposing a large-scale, multi-use project, which is requiring the rezoning of the subject property. The development is proposed to cater to the needs and serve the residents of Harvest Academy, which is a rehabilitative workforce development program. The applicant has provided us a concept plan, which I will share with you here in a minute. Moving on, this is the vicinity map of the area. It's at the intersection of Flor Drive and County Line Road, south of the airport. As you can see, this area consists of largely undeveloped, as well as some light industrial uses in the vicinity. This is the subject property. Here's the two parcels shaded right here. I have a couple pictures here. It's undeveloped land. This is a view from Flor Drive. This is looking from County Line Road. With that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the rezoning concept, as well as the development concept. This is the rezoning proposal, and you can see in the layout here, the various districts. Fronting Flor Drive is MX3 district, proposed along Flor Drive. Adjacent to this is P2 and the limited I1. Following that is the MX1 district, and then finally, this area to the east is NX2. So, the reason behind the various zoning districts is due to the fact that a variety of different uses are proposed, and those are laid out in a large-scale concept plan that was submitted with the application. I will point out that this is not finalized. This is just a concept plan. At the moment, it will change as the design and other details are worked out. So, this is a conceptual layout, and you can see kind of the different uses. The buildings that are proposed, fronting Flor Drive, are proposed to be zoned MX3, and they're going to be mixed-use. Adjacent to that, right here, if you can follow my cursor, this will be the limited I1 industrial area, which will include a moving company. To the north is a rec center. Following that, as you move further east, there's a few other transitionary uses proposed, some mixed-use, as well as some recreation, private recreation-type uses. To further east is the residential area. There are some townhomes proposed, right here, as well as potentially some multifamily as well. There are a few accesses proposed. There's one access off of Flor Drive. Currently, there's a couple accesses off of County Line Road. There's also an internal trail system, as well as maximizing on the green space with the detention area to the east. The streets, the internal street network, would be private street, but they're expected to be designed like a typical public street that follows our typical city design guidelines. So, with that, this staff believes that the proposal that the applicant has come up with here fits with the, generally with the concept that they're trying to come up with, and the concept is a self-contained community serving a specific population and their needs, an area where they can live, they can work, and they have recreational opportunities as well. It's designed to function as a mixed-use, new urbanist town center kind of a development. And so, in that context, it works well, and in the context of that, the proposed rezoning makes sense. And so, with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request to rezone into the multiple districts to serve the various uses that have been proposed by the The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, which is required as part of the rezoning process, and here's a summary of the meeting, the attendance, and some of the topics that were discussed at the meetings. I don't think there were any major concerns that were brought up at the meeting, just mostly sharing of information to the attendees, but the applicant is here, and they can talk a little bit more about their discussions at the neighborhood meeting. Additionally, we did not receive any comment cards from the adjacent neighbors. This is a consent map. And with that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? I just have one quick question. What's the little, on the consent map, if you can go back one, what's the little knockout that says "Structures"? Is that have owned?
It's a separate property.
Okay. I just didn't see it listed on previous slides, like who it belongs to. That's all. Is it a private residence?
Yeah, it's a separate property owner. There's a house on there, I believe, and so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Sri Oshie. Okay? The applicant now has...
One for Sri Oshie.
Oh, you have...
Yeah, I think she would be the one to ask.
Yes.
County Line Road, as you know, is a mixed gravel and asphalt road with no curbs or sidewalks. Is the city, has the city committed to paving County Line Road where this community will go, or is the applicant responsible for paving the road?
The city does not have a, I think the city intends to construct the road in the future. I don't think the exact prospection of the, or the design of the road hasn't been determined yet.
Okay. So, just to recap, so the city would be responsible, it sounds like, if, to improve the road?
The city will be responsible for constructing. From what we know right now, there has not been any discussions of the applicant contributing towards the improvement of the road, if and when that happens.
Okay. And at this point, like you said, it's not in a CIP or anything like that for County Line Road to be improved in any sort of near-term?
Not that we know of, and there isn't a plan in place at the moment, either, or design.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant now has 10 minutes to present. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Matt Cohen with RDG Planning and Design, 301 Grand Avenue, representing the applicant, as well as the future user of the site, in Harvest Academy, representing a number of folks here who are guests as well, so we have, we could answer any questions regarding the project. And I'll yield the 10 minutes to address any questions specifically from your review of the project to date, but we are very excited about the potential, and a lot of very good thought has gone into this from both the user and the property owner.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Carol.
Hi. I looked up, I was doing a little research on Harvest Academy, and it looks like, just by seeing the Q and A from your meeting, that this is a different model you're going with than from what you currently do? Is that correct?
The model's similar, and I'll invite Taylor to come up and join me as well. So, this is Taylor Smith with the Harvest Academy.
Good evening. We would not change the model from what we are currently doing. We're just trying to upscale from where we're currently at.
Okay. Because the current model is men-only, correct?
Correct.
But I saw something about having 80 students living there in the Q and A that was flashed up there, so...
Yeah, we're, so, right now, we have a facility with a capacity of 12 students, and we're looking to upscale that to upwards of, you know, 80-plus students.
So, the students would live there?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm, okay, so, it's not just men that are there then, right? It's families? Is that what you're saying?
It would be limited to students within the program of Harvest Academy.
Oh, so, I'm sorry. That's my bad. When I think of students, I think of pre-K to 12. So, you're talking about adult learners?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I was not an adult learner at that moment.
I was just going to expand on that as well. If you could pull up the overall site plan as well. The overall site would not be limited to the Harvest Academy students. So, the homes around the community park would be residence for the students. However, the mixed-use building towards the center of the site with the gym and then the mixed-use, those would also have apartments available in the long run. And then, as well as along County Line, the opportunity would also be there for future mixed-use houses, mixed-use housing, apartment housing in that case.
Okay. And there's a rec center, and then there's a gym res center or building. Are those, are some of those just for your student? There's one just for your students, and the other one for civilians, or?
Yeah, so, it is, it's just a concept. It's just a rough draft, but we are looking for public, but also specifically for our students, you know, buildings just for our students as well, just to keep them together as a community themselves.
Okay. Right? Because again, when I was looking at it, it looked like you really segregate yourself currently today, right? And this looks a little different, which I'm not for or against. I was just asking.
Yeah, so, segregation kind of out of, you know, not by requirement, but just kind of where we're at right now. We absolutely look to get these guys back into the communities at some point, but while they're in the program, we do like the concept and the idea of having them, you know, as kind of their own mini-community within.
Right. Okay. So, I presume this large-scale development will be staggered, timed, right? So, are you looking to build your piece first to accommodate your students, or are you looking to build the public pieces first? And how are you going to stage that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we are, the first thing we would do is, you know, I heard you talk about County Line, look to get that paved, look to get utilities out there, but we would...
So, you're going to pave that? Is that what you're saying?
I think it's a discussion to be had. I don't think there's any certainty on who or how much we or the city would pay, but we would first get, we would accommodate to the growth of our program by getting student housing out there first.
So, the purple buildings is what you're saying you would do first?
Yes.
And then, presumably, the moving company, because that's how you make money, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it would first be the, we would get one, you know, building to accommodate students. We would have that community center, which would be kind of like a dining, kitchen, open area for, you know, just to get people together as far as our student culture, and then, yeah, our moving company.
Okay.
Yeah, probably in that order as well.
Okay. Great. And is your Indianola location going to stay open, or are you going to move it all here?
We aren't certain, but we understand the transition, and the building process will be slow, so it'll kind of be, you know, until we're able to make that transition.
Are the mixed-use buildings on Flor Avenue, will those be leased by you or operated by your organization?
We would own them.
You would own them?
Yeah.
So, you wouldn't be leasing them to other businesses? You would be owning and operating them as well?
Yes.
Okay.
This reminds me a little bit of the Joppa request, which is in the same general area there, and there were some concerns that funding wasn't going, was an issue there. Is your funding all in place for your first phases?
We are, you know, we're doing fundraising right now, as we speak, but we fully, we have, I don't know the proper term, we have donations and fundraising. We have the money lined up to complete our first phase, which would be that student housing, the community center, and then the moving company, then we're going to continue. We understand this is going to be, you know, this isn't going to be built in a year or two. We understand this is going to be a long, I mean, you're probably looking at five-plus years minimum on this project. But Matt corrected me, those, on Flor, those buildings would be leased out potentially to other public. We would own them, but then we could lease them out as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And they're mixed-use, though, right? So, it would be business on the first floor and apartments up above?
For the ones along Flor Drive, it is more likely that those will be commercial office and retail use, and then, as you move off of Flor Drive, there'd be more of the residential components to the site.
And we're okay with that Flor shortcut?
So, a couple of things we have addressed along County Line Road that might be related to that question is, we've expanded the right-of-way, so we have pushed the buildings a little bit further north to anticipate changes to County Line Road in the future, and similarly with Flor, we've worked closely with staff. In fact, we've moved the buildings forward towards Flor a little bit, working with staff on that.
And the other thing to keep in mind, too, is right now, we're at just the zoning stage.
Right.
This is a concept to help them get through that zoning process. There'll be a detailed site plan review process ahead of us if it, you know, moves forward.
Any further questions from the commission for the applicant? Thank you. If you could sign your name and address on the sheet that is right there.
Both of us?
Yes. Thank you. Now have an opportunity for proponents in support of this item to come forward and speak, if you would like. Seeing none, if there's any opponents who are not in support of this item, you may come forward and speak now. Anyone neutral who would like to speak? Nope. Okay. Do commissioners have any further, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do commissioners have any further questions for staff?
I just request that every accommodation be made to work with DART and their planners to make sure that transit, even though it's not there today, the success of projects like this will rely on transportation, and knowing it's the end, probably their line for a while, just work with them for stops, or maybe a turnaround within your site. So, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. All right. Commissioners, motion? You can sit down now. Thank you so much. Commissioners, discussion or a motion?
I'll move staff.
Okay. All right. Any, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, a request from Locust Center, represented by Bruce Gerlman, for review and approval of a puddle-carrying site plan Jethro's Downtown for property at 221 Park Street, for a denied type-one design alternative to waive the requirement to provide the black banner-style LED streetlight fixtures that are required to be installed with all site plans within the downtown area. And Nick from staff will present.
Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarby, planning staff. Something that I just want to iterate, and we'll talk about a little bit, this applicant, they already have an approved site plan, so this was something that was submitted last year. They worked with us. It was administrative process. We got an approved site plan for them. They have since come back to staff, and now the commission, they'd like to waive the requirement to install that downtown-style light fixture. So, we'll dig into that, but that's literally the only thing that we will be discussing tonight, so just wanted to say that off the top. So, this building, you might have seen it if you're downtown. They've been doing a little bit of work on it. So, it's this site here at the corner of Third and Park. We got Iowa Event Center, Wells Fargo, that's here up to the north, got Second Ave, got the Riverfront Skate Park and things like that, Women of Achievement Bridge that are over here where my cursor is hovering. So, northern edge of downtown is the context that we're thinking about here. So, here's just a conceptual site plan showing the existing building. They've modified the entrance and done some site improvements to basically fit with all of our zoning requirements in terms of landscaping, streetscaping, things of that nature. So, here's just some conceptual elevations. We can go back to those if you want. Here's the existing light pole. So, this photo was taken a few days ago. It's got, it's like what you would call a steel or a galvanized-style pole. It's a little bit older, and we do have these in a lot of parts of the city, but this is what exists today. The city requirement would be to replace it as part of the site plan improvements with this pole that's across the street. So, this is at the Iowa Event Center complex. Really similar technically in terms of how it emits light, how bright it is, things like that. It is a different color, and it does have these banner arms here for banners to be hung for civic events. The city would hang banners, Des Moines Partnership, other types of organizations like that. So, that's the city requirement for all site plans within downtown. So, digging into the staff report here, staff, as we analyze the requests, generally, just to even back up a little bit farther, the black pole requirement in the downtown area, that's been something that the city has done, so in a lot of the city improvement projects, doing streetscape, CIP-related projects, the city has installed those black light fixtures as part of those citywide, city-initiated initiatives. And then also, as part of site plans, site development, redevelopment, new development downtown, something that's been required for now decades has been to replace any light fixtures on-site that are those residual, either wooden, or those steel-galvanized poles, with those black poles. As staff, we understand financially, that is an extra requirement. It does cost a little bit of money to do that, more so than just keeping what you have there, but the thing that staff likes to point out is downtown Des Moines, it is really the cultural, the social, the economic center of the state. It does have a unique context in that way, and so, for people that develop and are investing downtown, as the city, the city wants to see people invest and embrace that context. Really, Plan DSM really describes that in a couple different ways. In terms of thinking about community character, really, the placement of black poles, instead of leaving the existing poles downtown, it's really a placemaking element. So, placemaking is really the idea that you create places through design that are inviting, accessible, have a degree of vitality, and have a degree of invitation to them, and so, the requirement to place the black poles there instead of leaving the existing pole would really signify that, and it really creates a cohesive environment downtown. As we get redevelopment, as we get new development, you see the black poles, you're like, hey, this is downtown. This is that context. That's the economic. That's the cultural. That's the social hub of the state, really, honestly. And so, generally, for all those reasons, as staff, in addition to that being a requirement in the ordinance, as staff, looking back to Plan DSM and looking at the context and the environment we're trying to create downtown, we don't support the request. So, that's really the crux of the report. I'll be happy to take any questions about that or anything.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
What is the cost differential?
Generally, so, we have a couple building permits in right now. The building permit value is about $870,000, give or take, and those are estimates based on the construction. We have received an estimate that was forwarded to us from Mid-America, and it was about $30,000 to $36,000, and that was a really high-level estimate, and that would be for the installation of the new pole. So, the project cost is about $870,000, and then, the pole installation, per our estimate from last fall, about $30,000 to $36,000. It's about 4%.
That's on top of the 870, or is...
That would be correct, yeah.
Okay. And how many, how many are there, the poles?
Just one. It's right at the corner. I can go back and show you. So, it'd be this pole here, right at the corner. So, if you look at the site plan, so it'd be right here.
Okay.
Hold on a second. You said $870,000 total, and the pole is roughly $40,000?
Approximately, yes. That's the information that we have right now.
Justin, did you have a question?
I did, but he answered it.
Okay. Any questions from other commissioners for staff?
Oh, actually, you have a question.
So, this is just, the city wants uniformity.
I don't know about uniformity is the correct word. I think...
I think, the way I would describe it is, it's creating identity. A district, downtown's a district with a common identity, and the streetlight pole is one way, or part of many ways that that's achieved, and it's something, as Nick noted, that we've been asking for in site plans for a very long time, so this isn't something that's new to this code.
Are there other design elements that are an item of cohesion in this district?
The streetscape elements?
Yeah.
So, what we would call like a Class A sidewalk. So, as opposed to just leaving a five-foot walk, something as part of all downtown development, a six-foot wide walk with the 5-by-15-foot planter beds, so trees within beds, and then, from back of the curb through the sidewalk at the end of the right-of-way would be a hardscape surface.
Okay.
So, that's another element, too.
Streetscaping, too.
Correct. Furnishings and things like that, that would all be required downtown.
Okay. All right.
So, just a quick summary. This site plan was approved?
Yes.
And it had the requirements?
Yes.
Within the site plan?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. So, they, basically, yes. So, kind of through the process, it's something that the applicant and I have discussed, you know, dating all the way back even to the pre-application meeting. It's one of those things where they, we're going to comply with that. They have an approved site plan. I think they've got further along in the process, and they have decided to appeal that requirement.
Thank you very much. The applicant now has 10 minutes to present. Please state your name and address.
I am Bruce Gerlman, 303 Locust, Des Moines, Iowa, and I'm president of Locust Center Limited and also Jethro's Barbecue. So, I just want to paint the pole black. It's pretty simple. The poles, Nick, can you operate this for me? Because I want to just point out to everyone, the pole's all around me. I just want to point that out. Okay, so, there's the pole. The pole across the street where Buzzard Billy's is, that is a pole that matches mine. The pole halfway down the block that you can see is also a galvanized pole. If you go east over to Second Avenue, that pole is also a galvanized pole. If you go west across Third Street, that is a galvanized pole. The pole going down Third Street, and the point being, all, there are six other galvanized poles, all within 250 feet of my property. The only poles that are painted black are the poles that go north on Third Street. And that was all developed by Wells Fargo Arena and Hy-Vee Hall. So, that pole that you're looking at, the light fixture is identical to the black poles that are in compliance. The only difference between that pole and those poles is it's galvanized, and I just want to paint it black. $40,000 is an extraordinary amount of money to pay for that pole to be black. If the city wants it black, I own another property down the street at Third and Locust, the Homestead Building. We had a galvanized pole down there, and Mid-America came in and replaced it at no charge. So, I'm, that was... So I'm, that would be my point. We are in compliance with all the other requirements that the city had for us, as it relates to the sidewalks, to the streetscape, to the landscaping, to the rooftop screening, to the myriad of other requirements. So this is the only thing that we would not, that we are appealing. Just seems really silly to pay, spend $40,000 to replace that pole.
Nick, would you show the picture of the black one again? So another difference between the two is the banners, is there, are you also proposing that you install something that could put banners on the pole?
Well, if you want banners on that pole, I mean, that's the partnership and that's the Catch Des Moines and all those guys. I don't know why I would be responsible for their banners. Is that what you're asking me?
I'm just looking at the differences between the two poles, and the one that they have in the downtown district is a banner style, so it's, it enables banners to be hung, so that's why I was asking if...
Yeah.
Okay. Do commissioners have questions for the applicant? Nope? Justin?
How many galvanized, unpainted poles are in that area, again?
Well, I took an inventory. There are at least seven within 250 feet of my property.
Do you know they count on the black ones?
Justin, do you have a follow-up question, or is that sufficient? Okay, thank you. Chris?
Much like sidewalks, I mean, you have to start somewhere, and right, we've started somewhere right next to you, and that's growing, going down into the city to make sure we get uniformity throughout the entire district. It's in the ordinance, it's very, very clear. You're saying there's seven that aren't in compliance. How many poles would there need to be in order for you to say, well, you know what? That's fair, I'm cool with this?
Right now, it's 50/50.
So right now, the majority are going the right direction?
Well, you know, if you want to put that requirement off into the distance when it does change...
So you're saying that you would agree as soon as it goes at least 50/50, you'd switch the pole? Or like, I mean, because we're right there right now, aren't we?
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree at some point in the future, but in the foreseeable future, it's going to be years and years and years before all those other poles are changed out. Buzzard Billy's and that property's not going anywhere, the ZLR ignition, the Jester Building over there isn't going anywhere. Nothing's going to happen there for five years, I can guarantee you that. So I would be willing to do it at some point in the future when whatever criteria you'd want to hold me to. In the meantime, I'll paint it black.
Any further questions from commissioners? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Sign your name and address on the white sheet there.
I did want to share, maybe Bruce can comment if he wants, but we actually just had a pre-app for the Buzzard Billy's site. They're looking to do some improvements, they'll be going through the site plan process if they move forward with that project. So we might actually be having changes on the property to the south in the near term. Project may not move forward, you know, that's the nature of these kinds of things, but it is...
It's a possibility.
It is possible.
Okay.
May I speak?
Sure.
Isn't that relating to the old Barada space there, over on Second Avenue?
Well, I may have said the Buzzard Billy's, but it'd be the whole site. It doesn't matter which occupant in that building, but that property was in for a pre-app recently.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, and I think it's for the redevelopment over on the Second Avenue side of that property, which might encompass the entire building, because I don't know about all the specifics.
I was thinking it was an internal remodel, but I, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any persons in the audience tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? You may come forward now. Seeing none, if there is anyone who is in opposition to this item, you may come forward now. Anyone who is neutral. All right, thank you very much. Any further questions for staff?
We've had situations in the past where we could theoretically escrow the money. Is that something, now, granted, cities' escrow process seems a little inverted, it seems like it'd be more expensive to escrow than not. Does it make sense to provide that as an option here, where we can just say, well, you can either put this in, or you can spend more money to escrow this thing?
Where we've done the escrow is over in the Sherman Hill area, where we knew we were going to have that specialty lighting coming in. And what we were doing is we were securing the money that the applicant would spend on a normal black fixture like what we're asking for here, to be used for the project, but we didn't want them to actually do that, you know, because there's the specialty Sherman Hill lighting, which is more costly. So we were just saying, don't spend your money on the black light right now, just give us the equivalent, and when the big project comes through. So I think it's a little different, I guess is where I'm trying to go with that. I don't know that, in this case, just like you said, they'd be taking, it's the same dollar figure, so there'd be no benefit to the applicant, because they would be spending the money at this time, other than they might hope that the escrow expires and they get their money back down the road.
He mentioned something about another property where Mid-America installed the light without charge. Is that something that has changed, or I'm just curious about that?
I don't know the circumstance. It could have been a maintenance issue, you know, where they've gone in and just because of, you know, failure in the fixture pole, they went in and did it without doing research. I can't say that it's anything beyond that, but...
Chris?
Do you have a question for staff?
Is the light pole going, staying right where it is in the new site plan?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
If it's replaced, I mean, we could talk about where else to place it.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it to commission for motions and discussion. Justin, do you want to say something?
Are we asking him to replace the pole?
Well...
To be a black one?
It's a particular pole that has the capability of having the banners mounted and the fixture. So it's not, I think that's, is that accurate?
So, I mean, the item in front of us is to either waive the Type 1 Design Alternative or to deny it. And staff, staff's is for denying it. So if you move staff, it would be to deny it?
I think the applicant's also offered to explore a painting existing, but did we ever...
Would that allow for the banners to be?
No.
It wouldn't?
The poles are specifically designed to support a banner. They either can or can't. The older ones, I don't believe can.
So even if you paint it, you have a maintenance issue with painting it, because then we just sort of have this thing that's sort of flaking, we have to keep re-painting it, which has got to be a pain in the backside. It's not like the paint lasts forever.
Right.
We still don't have the banner, which is part of the actual purpose of the placemaking anyway, which is uniformity of that banner throughout. So I guess I see challenges with this actually meeting the intent of what we're looking for with this requirement if we don't replace it, because, you know, the only other thing we have within our power, because I think we said, we do on Sherman Hill Lights, we also do escrows with sidewalks as well, where we actually know that there's going to be something else. We've already said that, hey, if it's a 50/50, I mean, right now, we're dead even, if he replaces this pole as per ordinance, which is the ordinance they understood existed at the time that we started this project, this isn't something where it's overlapped over an old, something old here, right? As soon as we have at least one other pole taken out, we're well over 50/50, which we agreed to. If he puts this stuff in, we're over 50% already. Can we just add the escrow option? Say, hey, here's the escrow option, if you want to take it as well? Because I guess I'm not, I'm not in favor of just saying, hey, paint the pole that also doesn't have the capabilities that we want.
Yeah, and I think that's the other point I would make with the paintings, I don't even know that Mid-America would let us do that. This is the first I've heard of that. So we'd have to explore that, I don't even know if that's actually a possibility, but...
So if it could be painted and still provide the banner options, we'd be, would we be able to offer that? And if it can't be painted effectively and can't provide the banner, we'd require it to be switched?
I think you're opening a can of worms, if you sort of round, whole square peg that. I wouldn't support offering a painting and, you know, bracketing on an existing pole. I think the maintenance and the, as far as who keeps painting it and things like that would, is really a can of worms. I would recommend denial of the request and move staff.
So you've made a motion?
I've made a motion, first of all.
Okay. Unless there's any discussion or amendments to that, we can take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to deny, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four, request from T.L. Millis for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, the Aston, for property located at 603 E Sixth Street, for Type 2 Design Alternatives A through E. And we have Nick from staff to present again.
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. So just, there's a lot of Type 2 Design Alternatives up here, to try to break them up, A through D, they all run together, so they all really have to do with building, sighting, positioning, placement. So we'll come back to that. And then part E kind of stands on its own, it's just about the height. So I'll try to segment those in the presentation, but just wanted to say that off the top here. So here's the existing site. We're located about a quarter mile south of I-235, here in the upper part of East Village. We're about, we're a block north of the intersection, E Sixth and Grand. Kind of an edge condition right now, so a mix of some commercial uses, some medium density residential uses, and then as you go south, and then as you go to the west, it gets a little bit more dense residentially, a little bit more dense commercially. So digging into the site plan here, generally, the building is shaped as a U, so it's, it really has these, what I would call anchors, kind of here on the southwest corner, as well as the southeast corner, and then it U's, and then there's an internal courtyard here. The internal courtyard is really what is driving the relief that's requested in parts A through D. So I'll try to explain that better a little bit later, but just note the courtyard element is really driving a lot of that relief here. So just a couple of other views of the site plan, we can come back to them if we need to. So this is the south elevation, so this is if you're standing on Des Moines Street and you're looking to the north. So this area here is the courtyard area. This is that southwest corner, this is that southeast corner. So the lower level here would be of commercial space, so they don't really have tenants yet, but they would have commercial space that would be at the corner, and then it would run north along Sixth, so the Sixth frontage, and then that corner of E Sixth and Des Moines would be anchored by a commercial tenant. And then this space over here would be a leasing office and tenant amenity type space. The space is down here on the first floor, behind these windows. This is covered parking. So this is a parking deck, we'll look at a floor plan, you can help you visualize that a little bit better. And then we have the courtyard here. Everything on the second floor up is all residential. So we're talking 186 units total, residential units, about 7,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space, and about another 4,000 square feet of ground floor tenant spaces, leasing offices, things like that. The parking that they're providing is a mix of this covered at-grade parking, and then it also, as you can see here, it sinks below the ground. So there's about 142 parking spaces that are proposed right now, about, like I said before, 186 residential units. So here's just some other views. This is from the west side, so this is if you're standing on Sixth. So this is that ground story, and then as you go up, the residential uses, so commercial, got the flip here, and then residential above. You'll notice here, too, especially on this view, you can really tell, but the building is seven stories, and then there's what I would call like these little nubs that extend, and that's what makes it, that gives it that eight-story, and that's what exceeds that height threshold. So the height maximum is 75 feet. These guys right here, on both the ends of the building, kick it up to 85. This is that north side of the building, and then here's the east. So you can see it, the building is mirrored, it flips. This here, this is the garage entrance, so vehicular access would be off Des Moines Street, there'd be one driveway, it would come from, on the east side of the building, and then you enter into the garage here, and then you could descend through the garage below the site. So here's the floor plan here, so...
Come sit down, because later you know about...
Oh, sorry.
What way is that?
So this is the interior view, so this is the courtyard elevations. So this is if you're standing in the courtyard, looking towards the east and then looking towards the west here. Courtyard-specific elevation drawings. So the building kind of wraps, so you have like, you have a west elevation, and then you have the courtyard, so then you look at the courtyard from the inside, basically. That's what this is. Right here, so this is the lower level, the parking ramp. This is that first floor, we'll probably come back to this space. So this is that courtyard area here, here's the ground floor commercial space, here's the residential lobby, you got the parking that's behind it, so this is the garage entrance that we talked about earlier. And then this is that courtyard space, so there's a lot of things going on here. You've got some semi-public space that's proposed here, and you have a host of tenant amenity spaces, so some outdoor grills, fire pits, dog park, bocce courts, a host of different things that really designed as tenant amenity spaces. Here's general floor plan, here's that top-floor floor plan, you can see floor plan for the nubs, roof plan. And then I really want to stop here. So one of the big things with the height, the real, I guess the idea behind that height limit in the East Village, what we would call the Capitol Dominance Area, which is an area that runs from 235 in the north, over to the river, down to MLK, and then over to East 14th. So it's kind of like a box in that way. And so anything that's constructed there is not allowed to exceed a 75-foot height limit. And really, the idea behind that is to preserve what you would call these view corridors of the Capitol, both from downtown to the Capitol, but also from the Capitol in the areas downtown. And so what we're looking at here, this is a project or an undertaking that was actually put on by the state of Iowa back in 2010, as part of their Capitol Master Plan back in 2010. And they identified some of the crucial view corridors that existed. So from Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Center here, 235 as you're crossing the river, Principal Park on the east side, as you get in at East 14th and Grand, as you look north towards Capitol View. So just a smattering of some of the views that were identified as part of that planning process at that time, back in 2010. And at the city, we've taken a lot of this preliminary information, and we have been able to create this. So our GIS team was able to model the project and include it within, basically like a 3D or like an enhanced version of that image that we were just looking at earlier. So really looking at the same view quarters, the same view sheds. The project that we're talking about tonight, it's this one that's highlighted by my cursor here. So we'll take a look at some other views, but our GIS team was able to basically put a rendering or a model of the building, a three-dimensional model that really fits and works with the rest of the East Village buildings and things like that. So this is a view from 235, as you're looking east towards the Capitol. You can see right here with my cursor, this is the proposed building. You can see right here with my cursor, this is the proposed building. So the proposed building would not interrupt from that specific view quarter, that specific view shed. It does keep the Capitol View intact in that way. This is just a rendering that I wanted to show, that generally shows the building in three-dimensional form, kind of superseded over what's there. Again, here are the nubs, so these rise up to 85 feet. The rest of the building is 74 feet 10 inches, which, which would meet the requirements of, of not exceeding that 75-foot limit. Here's another view from Wells Fargo, so looking towards the Capitol to the east there. And then here's a view from the Capitol West downtown, so you can see the proposed project that's here, standing on the lawn, you're looking towards the west. So digging into the staff report here, regarding parts A through D, so thinking about the relief needed for some of the built-to-zone, occupied space, entrances, layout, things like that. I think generally, like I said before, the courtyard is really the element that's the linchpin of that, that part of the relief and that part of the design. Like I said before, especially on that east, the southeast corner, and then that southwest corner, there, there really is, in terms of the building, the building is really anchored in that way, so in terms of architecture, but also in terms of the use mix. So there are some ground floor kind of activation spaces that will really activate the street at ground level, which really meets the intent of that requirement. And then also, thinking about that courtyard again, we can go back to the floor plan, it really is, it's what you would call highly programmed, so there's a, there's a dog park, there's bocce, there's, there're going to be people in and out of that space and using that space. And so as staff, we looked at that, we felt that that met the intent of building to the street, having entrances, having that space occupied. And then also thinking about how that space interacts and intersects with the street right at the property line, how it abuts it, there's a, a mix of decorative fencing, plantings, retaining wall, that really do a good job of providing a balance of an edge, so this is an edge to the building, but also a degree of permeability. So there's stairways and things like that where people can go back and forth that would mimic a building being there in terms of occupied space. So for all those reasons, parts A through D, those parts of the design alternatives, as staff, we felt comfortable approving as its design and as was shown to you tonight. So digging into the building height, generally, just to reiterate, the, what, what the relief being requested for is here is that height limit. So within the capital dominance area that I was talking about earlier, there is a 75-foot height limit. The majority of the building is 74 feet, or would be 74 feet 10 inches, which, that, in that element, as proposed, that would be compliant as a seven-story building, they would not need any relief for that. However, there are two distinct pieces of the building right on the ends, for those two end units that would exceed that, they go up another 10 feet, it's about 84 feet 10 inches, and those are the elements that need the relief that exceed that 75-foot capital dominance restriction in that way for the height. So as staff, we thought about that, and it's really, the vast majority of the building is compliant. And so it's really just something that we wanted to point out, is that there's really only two little nubs that are necessitating the relief. The second piece is, is all those models that I was showing you earlier. So in coordination with our GIS department, we took a look at the building, we superseded it onto the existing built environment context, and those specific view corridors that have been brought about, not just by the planning effort that I showed you guys from 2010, but even decades past, that's been something in terms of the downtown planning that the city has put on, the city and its consults have put on, that we've really tried to preserve a lot of those view sheds. And just analyzing the, the mapping that our GIS team did, as staff, we felt that what was proposed was not interacting with or intercepting or destroying those view sheds in any way. So for those reasons, as staff, we support that part E, the design alternative for the height. We did get a couple of comments, and so I want to show them to you guys, and I'll just hold this here so everybody can read through. If you could look up when you're done, so I know when to move on, it'd be great.
I have a question about the bulleted, what's, a bolded, sorry, that they would point to this as precedent. Do you agree with that, or is this really not precedent because it's not in those, those viewpoints anyway?
Sure. I don't see the, and I think the other comment that we have from a staff person that works with the Capitol Planning Commission, it also expresses concern about precedent. I think the whole reason why we did this modeling and the, the chapter 135 was, has design alternative language specifically within the capital dominance overlay was so we could consider things case by case and make individual decisions, which tells you, and that's contrary to the notion of setting a precedent and just, we're just going to blanket we approve stuff. We, we are very intentionally and specifically wanting to look at things case by case, making a very wise, educated decision that's based off the specifics of the individual site and not just kind of a blanket standard. Have the blanket standard there, so there's a discussion and a starting point, but then go deep on each site if you need to.
People okay if I move on from this one? Much shorter comment here, just a general opposition. So that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Nick, the Lyons apartment building is taller than this structure, correct?
That, that is correct to my knowledge. I don't know the exact height, but yes.
Thank you.
Nick, the courtyard's generally at sidewalk grade level, right?
It, it's a, it's kind of a mix. I'll, yeah, that's a good question.
And are there any renderings, or are there just pure elevations?
Uh, we do have some renderings I can pull up. So the courtyard, go back to it here. So as you're, it falls, so basically, the, the grade kind of changes as you go to the west. So here, you're really at grade, and then the, the retaining wall grows as you go west. So it does, there is some elevation change. And I can-
If you zoom in a little bit now.
Yeah, yeah. So here, we're pretty much at grade, and as you head west, that's where you get the fall action. That elevation change, stair action here. Show you the rendering saved in here, in the folder.
He's got it.
Is the height limit from the east side or the west side? Like, is this building, because it's a five-and-a-half-foot change, just out of curiosity, I mean, is it-
Oh, I don't, as staff, I don't know if we analyzed that, like, from grade, we just considered like the, the building height exceeded 84/10, or exceeded 75 feet up to 84/10.
That's what I mean, height from where?
From, from grade.
At any, any point there.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's based off of the west elevation. You go to that elevation sheet.
And then that continues across, basically.
Would you show the west elevation as well? So, I know this is not part of A through E, but I just had a question about, since this would be the commercial, the first floor would be the commercial area, and I'm only seeing one entrance along there, were there any design alternatives?
That's a good question. So in the analysis of this site, I know this group, we've talked a lot about primary streets a lot. So the primary street and the primary frontage in this context is actually Des Moines Street, it's not E 6th. So there are no requirements per the ordinance to have a certain number of entrances every certain number of feet, like there would be on a primary frontage. The entrance requirement that they were getting relief for tonight is strictly on Des Moines Street. So they have two entrances on Des Moines Street, per the frontage that they have, and the, the building frontage that they have, they would need four. Now, I have, the applicant may be answered better for me, I know they have discussed maybe having multiple tenants in here, and then that, that would create more door action. I just, I know that's still up in the air for them tonight. But per the ordinance, it would not technically be required on 6th Street.
Okay, thank you. And then, I don't want to step on your toes, Carol, but can you show the parking level?
Mm-hmm. Oh, sorry, wrong way. Is this level, you want to see this?
Yeah, I'm just looking for bike storage.
Let me go one more.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Nick, can you go back to the west elevation?
Yeah.
Zoom in on the elevations on the corner. Where's zero?
Sorry, say that again, Todd.
Where's zero?
If we need to-
Zoom in.
Confirm if it's an average. Nick, I, I may have misspoke, but do we, when we calculate the building height, are we average, is it an average grade measurement?
Correct, yes.
On the whole perimeter?
Correct.
And I, I was incorrect when I said it was at any point.
But that zero southeast corner?
It'd still be, what's that?
That zero looks to be the southeast corner, because if you go south elevation, the east side of the south elevation is a 5/6 from, from, from the southwest area, and if you're putting zero there at 5/6 above-
Yeah, go to the, okay, this is the west, can you go to the east?
Yeah.
Scroll over so we can see the, the-
Scroll over to the left.
The left. No, but scroll up.
Sorry.
Go all the way up, and then over.
Let me, which way do you want me to go?
That way.
This way?
Yeah. Well, my screen is that way.
Okay.
It's like backwards, behind us, yeah.
We're pointing that way, it's the wrong way.
So that, okay, so that's-
Okay, now go down the sidewalk.
84 on that side.
Can we go down?
Oh.
Nick, the only reason why we are discussing this item is because of the two letters that were sent in, an objection that it's not in consent.
Correct, yeah, that's to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Was there a neighborhood meeting for this?
I think the applicant had one, I'll let them speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for staff?
Can you go to the one that sort of showed from above the-
The courtyard space?
Courtyard, and on the left-hand side, there was like a solid piece, which I, not this one, but, because this looks to be open to the sky, all of this, right?
Yes, yes.
But there was one rendering that made it look like this lower left corner had some sort of rooftop or something, or was I?
That was when it was imposed on the existing building. The rendering was overlaid over the existing building.
Oh, that had the barber, the barber's college still there? Oh, okay, well, that's all that.
Yeah, are you talking about, sorry. It was that one.
It was a view corridor?
Yeah.
It was-
This one?
Uh, yeah, that.
Yeah, so that's, that was superimposed on the existing here.
Okay, thank you.
That's a, that's a thank you for that clarification, yes.
Because I was trying to resolve that in my brain, I'm like, what the heck is that? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can you go back to the superimposed, like, the barbershop being in the corner? Is that Des Moines Street? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, Des Moines Street here, E 6th, mm-hmm.
Did you have a question, Justin, or are you just trying to look at?
No, I'm-
Okay, thanks. Any more questions for staff? Thank you, Nick. The applicant may now present. You have 10 minutes, please state your name and address.
After, or evening, I should say, Dan Oliver, at 1501 River Drive, Moline, Illinois, also Locust Street in East Village. I kind of like to follow the lead of the previous designer and to state that we're really excited about this project and what it, it brings to that edge of, of the East Village and what it can do. And I guess I will turn it over to answer anybody's questions or concerns.
Go ahead.
I think this looks, from the design perspective, as a great project. From a modeling and marketing perspective, what is the breakdown between market rate residential units versus affordable units?
May I bring up our legal counsel to answer the technical questions?
I'm Jenny Drake, in-house counsel for Heart of America Group. I'm at 515 East Locust, Suite 100, Des Moines, Iowa, and we are currently negotiating a development agreement with the city of Des Moines, and which would include 10% of the units would be LMI. And so that would, the equivalent of 18. Or is it 19? 18 or 19 of the units would be LMI.
And what AMI?
Um, I think we're doing, Whitney, do you remember? 80%.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Carol.
Um, you're required to have 15 bike spaces outside, yet you're only providing 14 on your design?
15.
On your sheet, you said you're, it's required 15 bike spaces outside, yet you only show seven racks, which would be 14.
Uh, we have them placed all around. We have some, there, there is some in the courtyard, and then there are also some on the nubs, yes, and then down on that one. So we should complete all those.
I guess you need to zoom in, I can't really see.
Oh, it's two there, okay.
Oh, okay, so those four go with the seven. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I didn't see those, thank you.
And plus, in the parking garage, then there, that is basically for tenants for secure storage.
Yeah, rock on, that's fantastic.
And it's got a, a repair shop in there, too.
Yeah, love, love, love that, thank you. Speaking of biking, though, the building that you have under construction in the East Village?
Yes.
You have put jersey barriers that not only incorporate the right-of-way, they incorporate the bike lane. It says on sheet C 2.1, number 12, do not store construction materials and equipment in the right-of-way on your provided sheet.
Carol, this is germane to this item, just checking.
I, I'm just going, what he says on the sheet.
I thought you were bringing up another construction, you said-
Well, I'm mentioning the one they have in practice, they're not doing what they're saying they're going to do here. I just want to confirm that they are indeed going to follow the two items that they wrote on sheet C 2 dot 1, number 12, and 2A regarding not storing things in the right-of-way.
Okay, I wasn't aware that we were, do, do we, on the current one, John, have permission to do that? We have a right-of-way permit for the current one.
Okay, so I just want to confirm that your document that says that you are not going to store construction materials and equipment in the right-of-way?
They, they might, if they have an obstruction permit, they may have permission to do that, but why that, if they didn't have the permit, then they would not, and so the site plan needs to say that, like- And so the site plan needs to say that, like, that they wouldn't. But I do think you raise a interesting or good valid point about the, a obstruction permit being issued that allows something that's obstructing a bike lane. So, and we can go back and talk to our traffic staff and see what they know about it and see if...
I've raised it to them, the council members, and the manager of the Traffic and Transportation, the city engineer, and I've not been able to get that moved. These are very risky and unsafe conditions for people that are riding bikes in the area to all of a sudden have the area where they're riding their bike not be available. And I would encourage you to not have that condition for this project.
Maybe you could just, you know, see what you can do on the existing site.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
I know, last time, there was no real undergrounding plan with respect to broadband or no real plan with respect to actually broadband options within the old building. Is there something, is this the same case in this building? Have we thought about extra conduits to make sure we're not, you know, preventing or causing more, you know, sort of broadband accessibility blackout areas or anything else in the undergrounding plan or anything with respect to competitiveness within the building as far as broadband offerings? Or has anything in there been considered or looked at?
We haven't even looked at anything as far as, as that intense into the infrastructure discussions since we're so preliminary on this project.
Are the balconies going to be over the right-of-way?
Yes.
So, has that, that's been approved already?
No.
Yeah, we'll have to, have we had discussions about vacation air rights? Okay. As long as you, as long as you know, that, that would be something that comes...
Those are things that follow after, if we keep proceeding with...
Sometimes we try to marry that with the site plan, but not always. Sometimes the timing's not possible, and so it comes later, just like what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry, just one more. So to get into the garage, you're going to come off of Des Moines and take a left onto that, it's sort of like an interior drive now, right, that you, that's shared with that medical building? Is that correct?
Uh, it, it is, it, the, the drive now doesn't exist. It's, it's right now, it's a parking lot. And so where the drive is would be the eastern edge of, of the parking lot that's currently on the barber shop site. So that's a new, new drive that would come in.
Oh, okay. So those trees that are shown there, those will remain? Those big, beautiful trees that are there?
Yeah, those are, those are not ours.
Okay.
Can you go like me if I can skate you?
Okay, I got it. So then the other, so then the, the through street that goes through, it's not a street, but it's a, you know what I mean, that goes through, that will, that's not going to be connected to your new driveway? Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. Oh, if you can, yeah. Also for your legal counsel.
Yeah.
If there is anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in support of this item, you may come forward now. You have five minutes. You say your name and add, and address, and then also sign in the sheet when you're finished.
Hi, Commissioners, it's good to be here. Troy Hall, I live at 2530 University Avenue, Apartment 101. Soon to be Apartment 205, though. 101 for now. I just want to give my thoughts, I'll keep it brief. I really appreciate this development. I think this is exactly what we need. This is one of those quality of life things that I think when people see going up around Des Moines, I think that they get excited about it. I get excited about this type of development. I think that my thoughts are actually particularly relevant in this one because I used to work at the Capitol, I used to be a Capitol tour guide, so I would take people up to the library and we'd look out at Des Moines and I'd point things out. I think that the, I, I encourage you to move forward with this plan. I don't think that the, the height of the building, especially with how small of a part of the entire building it is, will make a giant change to the skyline, so I just wanted to put that out there as well. I've seen the Capitol master plan, actually, so I'm glad that that was brought up. But yeah, that's, that's, those are, those are my general thoughts. I'm happy to see underground parking, not a bunch of surface-level parking. I think that the city has plenty of surface-level parking, so I was glad to see that. I would encourage, I don't know, I wasn't quite sure where we were at with the, the indoor bike storage, and I'm sorry if I didn't catch that.
We'll, we'll flip the sheet over there, but they, they have a secured parking area in the big parking garage.
For bicycles as well? Awesome. Awesome. Yeah, that, that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this item? Anyone neutral? Okay. Seeing none. And we have any, I can close the public hearing. We have any further questions for staff? No? Okay, open it up to motions and discussion.
I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. I think this is the type of development that the city should be incentivizing, underground parking, affordable units, taking use of all the space that's available to them, so I will be moving staff.
Thanks, Johnny. I was gonna wholeheartedly agree with that. I would like to thank the gentleman for giving tours. If you haven't gotten a tour, they're phenomenal and they're free, so our state capitol's beautiful. I think we should all take advantage of that. I live in the East Village and I have, I love having the state capitol right there, and I trust the staff that if there's, they're not worried about the view, I'm not either.
As a one clarifying curiosity, the actual GIS work that was done, was that done by staff or done by the applicant in support of their positions, or did we take on all that project?
The, the LiDAR work that, that underlying model, that was a city initiative. Our GIS department out of IT did that. And then what we do is we take their drawing information and insert that into our model.
I imagine that's there so that it can be used for multiple projects?
Yes, absolutely. This was not created, this, the LiDAR, this underlying model was created a couple of years ago. Does that sound about right? And we've used it for other, other purposes, but it was, it was developed with the intention of, I mean, what motivated us was the Capitol view, but I think it could be interesting to use in other, other projects throughout the downtown.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to move staff. Unless there's any more discussion or amendments, we can vote on that. Okay? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number six. Request from Singh Development LLC, represented by Hardeep Balagan, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Hardeep C Store, located at 5901 Floor Drive, for a denied Type 1 design alternative to allow retention of a drive access from a primary street when drive accesses are required to be situated off of alleys or non-primary streets. And Nick from staff is going to present again.
Cool. Thanks. Nick Tarpe, planning staff. So again, right now, we're not really talking about any of their site development elements or the building or anything like that. The building is driving a site plan. As part of the site plan requirements, you're required to conform to the access requirements that are set out, both in the building type section of the planning and design ordinance, but also in Article 6, which regulates vehicular movement, parking, drive accesses, things like that. So there's a couple of code sections here that really speak to consolidating and limiting drive accesses in terms of an established hierarchy. So when we think about site access, if there's an alley, we want you to use an alley. That's, that's what's in the code. Now, if you don't have an alley, you can use kind of that next level up, which would be a non-primary street. And if there's no non-primary street available, you would go to the primary street. So the, the purpose of this request tonight is, the applicant, they've got three existing accesses. As part of the site plan, as staff, we've recommended that they close one, the one on Fleur, which is the primary street. The applicant, they've, they've want to keep all three of them open. So that's what we're talking about tonight. So here's the site, and we can take a look at the access that I was talking about. So this is the BP gas station. If people have been to the airport, you're probably familiar with it. It's right across from the newly designed main entrance here. McKinley Ave's about a half mile to the north, and we're about a third of a mile north of Army Post Road, generally. So here's just a conceptual site plan here. So this is the existing building. This is that building addition. We'll look at a street view later, but there's a car wash here, that would be going away as part of the site plan. They're also proposing some pavement removals and some landscaping to comply with current standards. This is the drive that they want to keep open. They've got two other drives here that, as staff, they're, they're allowed to keep those. That was our determination. So they can keep two, but as staff, we wanted them to close that third one that's off Fleur. So elevation is to show you the addition. So here's some photos of the site. So this is taken northwest of the site, on the opposite side of the street, from the street corner. This one is just right, right in front of the building, on the opposite side of the street, Fleur, looking from the west towards the east. And then this one is on Fleur, so on the building side. So this is that drive that, as staff, we are requesting to be closed. This I wanted to show, so those of you that might be aware, the city right now is putting forth what's called a Vision Zero Action Plan. Vision Zero is the idea of trying to reduce pedestrian and vehicular fatalities and severe injuries through street redesign, education programs, host of things. And the map that we're looking at here is what we would call a high injury network. And basically what that means is that any of these lines here that are shaded this dark color, this black here, they have a higher proportion of vehicular crashes and particularly crashes where people are killed or they're severe, or severely injured. And the site that we're looking at tonight is right at the terminus of the one on Fleur. So this is Fleur Drive here. The site that we're looking at tonight is literally right here. So I just want to come back, I'll come back to that eventually, but I did want to point that out. That's an impetus for some of the staff recommendations that you're going to hear So digging into the staff report here, so like I said before, the site's at a corner, it's got three accesses, per the ordinance, but also in consultation with our Traffic and Transportation Department. Really, three, the site does not have enough traffic to really necessitate those three drive accesses. And as staff, we, we want to work with the applicants, they're allowed to retain two off that non-primary street. We just really feel, feel strongly about the one off Fleur. And, and why is that? You're like, why, why does he really care so much about that one access on Fleur? Well, generally, access points, they generally affect corridor safety, so the more access points that you have onto corridors, that's the more conflicts that you create, not only with other vehicles, but pedestrians, transit riders, cyclists, other types of users of that nature. And so as you, if you reduce access points, studies have shown that you reduce crashes because you reduce those conflict points. And like I said before, I, I mentioned that Vision Zero draft plan, like I said, it's just a draft plan right now, but corridor access management is one of the tools that we have in our toolbox to be able to try to improve the safety of our corridors. But there's not going to be a CIP project necessarily on every street, in every mile of the city, but when we do site development, that is a mechanism that we do have per our city codes and ordinances to reduce some of those driveways. And so generally, reducing that access off Fleur would, one, you would direct and align all vehicular traffic through a controlled intersection. There's a stoplight right there at the intersection of Fleur and High View. But two, you would reduce pedestrian conflicts with people coming in and out of that Fleur access. So there's a bus stop right there, so transit riders, cyclists, pedestrians, and then other vehicles as well. So it's like a two-pronged approach and a two-pronged goal, really. And so for all those reasons, as staff, we are recommending denial of the request. I'll be happy to take any questions on it.
Good day. The rise leading on Florida, the lot of the site plan, is it too close to the...
Say that again?
Can you turn your mic on, Todd?
Sorry.
Sorry. Would that, would that curb cut be allowed by engineering if it were a new site plan or is it too close?
No, it would not, no. And it's not necessarily because of the distance, it's, again, it's, it's the street, you're on a corner.
Right.
And so the engineering principle would be, both from planning, but also in the engineering code, would be, if you have an access from a non-primary street, that's the one you should use because it has fewer conflicts.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Carol? Can you go to the page that shows where the bike rack is located?
I'll zoom in.
Did you provide relief on not, on having them not follow the Chapter 135 on where the bike rack should be located?
Well, so that's, we're still kind of, we're in, in between the site plan submittals right now. So I know that the, and applicants here tonight, they've kind of redesigned some of the things they placed on the site a little bit in terms of the landscaping and bike rack and things like that. So that's when we say compliance with all administrative review comments. That would be something that we would work with them on to get that placed appropriately.
Okay, thanks.
It was said there wasn't enough traffic to justify three driveways. What was the traffic count that was used along both Fleur and High View to make a determination of suitability?
We, so I don't know the exact traffic counts. This is in consultation with our traffic staff, and it was, hey, this is a use that's not driving enough trips for, to require three accesses. This, we're doing a site plan, we would request that one of them be closed. They, the, a gas station, a use like this, does not have a demonstrated need to, to maintain or retain three accesses. That's what I was referring to when I made that comment. Does that help?
I guess...
It wasn't about the traffic counts that are on Fleur and High View right now. It's about the, the generation that the use would create or has been creating.
What is a generation that would be appropriate for three driveways? Like, how much, how many trips would need to generate?
I couldn't, I couldn't answer that question. That'd be, that'd be something I would consult with our traffic engineers, they would be able to answer that. I couldn't answer that myself.
Yeah, we're, we're just passing on what the advice they gave us.
So, throw out sort of a hypothetical. The second drive access on High View Drive, that's...
This one here?
Further east, yes. If that wasn't there, or if the property line ended there, so let's say there was only one entrance there, would an entrance on Floor Drive then be permitted?
Uh, no, because it would still be that, a primary frontage, and so there's just, basically, the goal is to limit accesses off those primary, high-traffic, or what a lot of people call arterial-type streets. So it still would not be allowed. Really, one, one access per site is what, is what the code requirement would be. We could grant relief and allow more, but if this was a freshly developing site, how we would want this developed would be really just one access off of High View.
So is this a fairly recent change? Because I'm thinking about all the gas stations that I have been to that are on corners, and they pretty much all have an access on each, the primaries, like 31st and University, the Come and Go that went in the last couple of years. There's a gas station at 28th and Grand. I, I just, a lot of the gas stations are on corners and they've got one on each road to facilitate, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of a gas station, you know, sometimes fairly frequently, and it can get kind of congested in there. So I'm just wondering if this is something more recent, since we haven't seen this come down.
That's, Jason, interrupt me, but that's my understanding with the, those ordinance passing in 2019, that was a new element.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Historically, our, we did, I mean, under the old code and site plan requirements, we had C store design guidelines, but we, we'd always had relied on the engineering standards to dictate the number of driveways in the past. So I think you're seeing two things. One, you're seeing our new code has driveway placement and number requirements in it based off of building typology. And then, in addition, the thinking that the Traffic and Transportation Division is evolving, and they're not just, it's not just a, like, how close am I to an intersection kind of question. It's all about, it's also now about, you know, the, like, vision, say, you know, the, the Vision Zero, sorry.
Right.
You know, those kinds of goals and pedestrian safety. So it's evolving, you know, it's something that in the last couple of years really has been become more to everybody's attention.
I'm just curious, because the Come and Go at 31st and University is also at a high-traffic corridor, and I think it was listed on that Vision Zero, which maybe is new since that Come and Go went in, but that went in since 2019. So, pretty sure that...
Oh, by Drake?
Right.
That, that, that actually, they went through the, they, that project, it was constructed, but it was, went through our approval processes under the old code. It was NPC, the Old Zoning District.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So it actually predates the new code.
I guess my memory fails me there.
Oh, that's okay. It was, it was right at the...
Right at that cusp. The other question I had about the Floor Drive sort of traffic safety, so there is an island, so presume, you know, all of the traffic on that Floor Drive curb cut would be coming from one direction and going out in one direction. be coming from one direction and going out in one direction. There wouldn't be cross-traffic. And I'm, I know you're looking at, at data, so I'm wondering where the propensity of crashes happen? Are they at the intersection of High View Drive? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a crash map in front of me necessarily. I just know generally, the corridor, when you take it as a whole, has a high crash rate. I don't know if there's clusters necessarily within the corridor.
Any other further questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Nick. The applicant now has 10 minutes to present. May come forward. Please state your name and address.
Matt Palin, 3013 Northeast 158th Avenue.
Can you speak a little bit more into the microphone so we can hear you?
Matt Palin, 3013 158th Avenue.
Thank you.
So for, for us, the issue is about the delivery truck. So what, the delivery truck has to come in on, on Fleur Drive and go out the back, the back entrance for High View Drive. If we close that, if we close the drive that's on, on Fleur, the delivery truck will have to sit in the street. He can't make it into the lot to park, to fill the tank underground and then drive back out. So we're going to create, you know, it's, it's a safety issue to leave the truck on the street rather than have him come into the lot.
Do you have any truck turning radiuses? We would tip, we typically ask for those.
I can provide some of that to this site plan.
To clarify, so you're saying the tanker comes in off of Fleur, then northwest corner is where your actual tank entry points are located? So come up to, come up along that west side, then exit out through that first exit on High View? Is that the circulation?
Yes. So the, so we're going to, the truck delivery comes in on Fleur Drive, drives up the, by the parking spaces, and the, the tanks empty right here. So the, the delivery truck has to park parallel to the building and then drive back out this back entrance. If the Fleur Drive entrance is closed, he will have to park on High View Drive and fill rather than on the property. We'd, we'd have to make a drive so he could park next to the street, you know, the, where the overhead power line is, he'd have to park there. So-
I'm sorry if I'm asking-
Go ahead, go ahead. I realize it's just new information.
Yeah, yeah, because I, we hadn't, I mean, I think we'd asked for a trunk, a truck turning information, but, so the turn is more gentle heading, like, as you come in and then you head north towards High View and then, because you, you're making a fairly sharp turn there to get lined up with the-
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So right, and right now, I'm showing the shrubs on, on High View Drive, but actually what happens is that delivery truck drives over the sidewalk. Because it's all gravel on the other side of the sidewalk. We'd have to replace that with grass, and the truck would still drive over that anyway.
So you're saying the proposed landscaping would get driven over?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to comply with, comply with requirements, so.
Right. I mean, but we don't, we also don't like to see landscape driven.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's not in the spirit of the requirements. Um, okay. Do we need to continue this item until the truck path can be sorted out?
Yeah, I, I think that might be a benefit if maybe we could continue it and work with you, so maybe you can, we can come back and, I don't know, I'm going to look at staff. Is the next meeting doable or is this really, do we need more time? Because when's the pack could go out? Next, next week? Would I, I, I don't know, Nick, what, what your schedule, I don't know, Sarah, would you be able to meet for, maybe with Nick tomorrow, Friday? I mean, tomorrow or Monday, you know, and like, maybe give us a drawing or two? If you're not in a hurry, we could also push this out a month instead of just a couple weeks. What seems more doable to you? You, you would probably need to act faster to do drawings, so-
Right? I mean, I suppose I could make it happen, but a month would be nice.
Okay, let's do that. Let's go continue this to the second meeting in June, June 15th. Okay.
Thank you.
I, I can move that if you need a motion.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. I'm just going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, do that. Skip any comments since we're moving to continue. Um, is that a, would you, sorry, looking over it.
No, that's fine. I don't, I think if we're going to continue and open it up-
Okay.
The next meeting, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Motion to continue this item to the June 15th Plan and Zoning Commission. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
All right. Just get in touch with Nick and-
Okay. Yep.
All right. Are there any committee and director-
Quick comment for staff?
Yes.
Can we explore the option of closing one of the driveways on High View Drive as well? I mean, I don't know what the turnaround-
Yeah.
-drawings are going to come up with, but if that's something that's preventing the site from closing the, the one on Floor, then we should probably explore the other two.
Okay. Yeah, we can look at all options and come back. I mean, are you saying if, in fact, we can't make the turn radiuses work, maybe the alternative is like the one of those, yeah, you just end up with one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's fair. I mean, it makes it better.
I mean, I just have a hard time thinking that if Hy-Vee up the road or if the airport down south come and request that waiver, we're not going to grant it to them. So that's why I'm trying to-
Yeah. And, and part of coming in tonight, we, like, I think, like you've seen, we had no information, you know, didn't have a truck, you know, that information to, to make us go, well, let's think about it.
You should probably also waive some of the landscaping requirements and have them pavement.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I don't think we want stuff that's just going to die. I mean, I think it might be better to have just a little more pavement. We'll work with the applicant on, on sorting that out, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any committee or director's reports?
I just to let everybody know that, I think a while back, you saw, we did a 5:30 presentation on the city's historic preservation plan, citywide preservation plan. We are kind of on the, we've got a draft document. We're going to meet one more time with the advisor committee and, and other folks. We're going to have, but there's going to be a survey that's, we're trying to solicit more input on, on the, you know, are we hitting the mark? What are the priorities? So we will be sharing that information with you all. And then when the draft is, when we're going through the approval process, we will come back for the commission, do a presentation as it goes through different boards and commissions. So that'll be like June, July-ish, somewhere around there. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.